Well, welcome everyone to our first meeting after town meeting day. And so we're, we have a little bit, it's a little bit of a different structure. So the first thing on the agenda is for us to introduce ourselves, especially since we have a new recorder. Thank you so much Amber. Let me get back to the agenda real quick. So, alright. Paul, will you go first and we'll just go kind of in a semicircle.
Paul Lathrop, Pittsburgh, at large seat.
Hi, Lauren Thomas, I'm in the Brandon seat.
Leslie Bianveneau, I'm from Lester.
Kevin Thornton from Brandon.
Renee Sanchez Superintendent.
Lori Bertrand from Sudbury.
Brent Scarborough, Brandon.
Brent Mullin, Pittsburgh.
Barbara Ebling, at large.
And also in the room is Debbie Alexander, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment. Oh, and Fernanda, can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, you didn't.
Fernanda Canales-Goshen.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So if I could have everybody kind of take a look at the agenda and...
Move to accept the agenda.
Kevin has moved.
I'll second it.
Leslie has seconded it. Could we get any discussion? Okay, so could I get a vote for the approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The agenda has been accepted. So moving on to the next step is to make sure that everybody has, and this is something I had a question on, I don't know if anybody has the answer, is if you've already been elected, because we have no new board members, if we have to take the oath of allegiance and oath of office again?
If people have been newly elected, they should have done so.
Okay, so if they're not newly elected, okay. So then we're in good shape, everybody was elected previously. Natalie, sorry to put you on the spot.
Except for me.
Okay.
Is that what you were talking about? I was appointed the last year, so this year I'm newly elected, so I need to be sworn in.
Okay, so then yeah, we'll need for you to get the oath of office and the oath of allegiance.
Do you already do that?
Do I do that at the Town Clerk or do you want me to?
Town Clerk.
Natalie, can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Natalie Steen. Who am I introducing myself to?
To Amber.
Amber. Hey, I don't know if they know each other.
Natalie and I have known each other for 17 years.
Something like that.
He's counting.
I've been on the board, what, four years? And I am a resident of Brandon.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, the next item is to elect the Chair of the OVUU Board. So at this time I'll open up for nominations.
I nominate Lori.
I nominate Lori Bertrand.
So, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why.
Are there any other nominations? At this time? Utilizing my teacher wait time.
I think you can close the floor.
Okay. Alright, at this time, thanks to the advice of Mr. Thornton, we will close the floor. And so, all in favor of Lori Bertrand as the OVUU Chair, please say aye or raise your hand in virtual land.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the ayes have it.
Okay, I'm back in action, thank you. Alright, we're gonna move to elect a Vice Chair, currently that is held by Natalie. I'm opening nominations, go ahead.
I nominate Natalie Steen to be Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any nominee, other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, all those in favor of Natalie as our Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, congratulations Natalie. Okay, we need to elect a clerk, which is currently held by Barbara Ebling.
I nominate Barbara. I didn't get a chance to tell you this, but I'm gonna respect.
I second it.
Thank you, and I'm gonna respectfully decline.
Okay.
But thank you, yeah, I didn't have time to prep you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be clerk? Don't roll your eyes or make weird faces.
It's a super high-pressure job, honestly.
It really isn't if Amber is here.
No, it's not. It's a pretty...
I nominate Brett.
I, no. I'm not the right person for that job.
You sure?
Positive.
I think you could grow.
No, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I love how everybody's looking at everybody else.
She's on Hawk Hill.
She just went black, so apparently she does not want to be.
She's on Hawk Hill, right?
Leslie?
What's your name?
Negotiations and...
Leslie said maybe, I'm gonna nominate her.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Leslie as our clerk, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Leslie is our clerk. Alright, the next thing we need to do is appoint three board members to the RNESU Board. Currently those positions are held by myself, Kevin and Barbara.
I nominate all three of you.
Okay. There we go. Are there any other nominations?
Is that who nominated?
Fernanda.
Yeah.
Nope, right? Yes, Fernanda.
Fernanda and... And then the second was Barbara. Hearing no other ones, all those in favor of sending back Lori, Kevin and Barbara to the RNESU Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Appointing a Stafford Tech Center Advisory Board Rep, that is currently held by Kevin, I believe.
Yes, and...
I think she's trying to nominate you.
Okay.
I am.
Yep.
I'll second it, unless you were about to say you didn't want to do it in the nomination case.
No, I'll do it, but if anybody else wants it, it's a pretty easy gig. Meetings are eight in the morning in Rutland, it's the only hard part for me. And you do learn about Stafford, and it's, if the state moves in the direction it appears to be moving, the tech centers may become more important. So if anybody else wants to learn those things, now's the time.
Is it once a month meeting? Is that when you meet?
It's quarterly. Yes, and their, the administration is, prepares very well for these meetings, virtually all the votes are unanimous. So it's more of a learning experience than a deliberative one in some ways.
That's a good breakfast.
Yeah, coffee cake's not particularly good.
Okay, is there any other nominations besides Kevin at this point? Hearing none, all those in favor of Kevin Thornton being our Stafford Tech Center Advisory Board Rep, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Kevin, it's yours.
Okay.
Communications with parent citizens and staff, let's see, there is a letter in your packet from Charlene, we'll talk about that later on in our agenda, about her resignation as our District Clerk and Recording Secretary. Anything that, I don't think we've received any, I did a lot of back and forth with people before the budget with questions, mainly about the VCC, so, in the last month since we met before, so, other than that, I haven't had any communications. Okay, seeing that no one else wants to talk to us, we're gonna move forward to the consent agenda. That's, I think, yeah, consent agenda. So this one is pretty, this consent agenda is pretty large, so this is the only time where I will say if there's something you want to take off and discuss, we need to say before we make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Yeah, Barbara?
I move that we take off the resignation letter. That's part of it, is that part of it?
No, that's for, no, it is not on there.
Okay, got moved off it, sorry.
No, okay.
Never mind.
Alright, so if nobody has anything to talk about, I would accept someone to make a motion for the consent agenda.
I will then...
I move that we accept the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes, we just did half our, boom. Alright. Alright, Global Ends Monitoring, we have a presentation tonight on our snapshot with district data reporting by Superintendent Sanchez.
And Debbie will help out at the, at the end when we start talking about future stuff. Alright. There we go. So tonight's presentation, the first part of it is largely an explanation of what the Vermont Educational Snapshot is. It is one of the ways that we are in compliance with the federal expectations of our, of education. The middle part is talking about that parts of our data suggest that we need to put some emphases in other parts of our, of our school system. And I'll, there's a slide in here that'll explain what that means, and then at the end is how we plan to address it moving forward. And so, I'll go ahead and get started. So, the first thing that I need to say is, so back, I guess, early 2000s, the initial federal accountability system was created called No Child Left Behind. And that was the first time that there really was some expectation from the federal government to states that they had to make sure that all students were receiving a fairly equal and somewhat equitable education. And so, that came into existence because it followed, it followed George W. Bush from Texas to the, to the White House. And for good and, for better and for worse, it really allowed more students to access curriculum that they weren't able to access before. Later, after it had run its course, the federal government passed something called the Every Student Succeeds Act, which added a few more components to No Child Left Behind, including making sure that students had access not just to academic standards, but rigorous academic standards. It also made sure that the assessments were more, that they were tied more closely to curriculum, and that they should be reported publicly. It also added a accountability system that it wasn't just reporting the scores, but there was going to be actions taken by the states on schools and districts if they were not reaching the point of being able to serve all students. And then the last component is that there was a reporting expectation that we not only just talked about our scores, but making sure that we were talking about what our goals were in the first place and the outcomes that we intended to achieve. Within the Vermont system, is that me? I guess I did, let me close that out, because that's in the way. Okay. Well, it's still up there. Okay, so within the Vermont system, with the accountability system that it sent to the federal government as part of our Every Student Succeeds Act Plan, we had, they created five indicators: academic proficiency, personalization, safe and healthy schools, high-quality staffing, and investment priorities. So in order to, in order to achieve these five indicators and to have the accountability system, what Vermont gets in return is our title funds, like our Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and our special education funds. So these are the things that we get in return to make sure that we are serving all of our students. To the right, you'll see that there is an expectation that 95% of our students, of all students, that includes 95% of all student groups, are part of the testing that takes place. The four components, the four components within that grid, that is what's being measured, particularly for the academic proficiency category indicator. So it's gonna look at, how did the students do on this particular test? And then how did they do on that particular test compared to the year before? There's also a review of, given that there are these particular students who meet this particular student group category, then these other students who don't meet that same category, how are they doing compared to the other? So it's really looking at achievement gaps, or it's trying to address achievement gaps. So when, when that bottom left-hand square says current equity index, it means what is your, what is your achievement gap this year? And the bottom right, your equity index change, is what is your achievement gap? Did it increase or decrease from the year before?
Can I ask a question about...
Sure.
In a small school, let's take Lothrop or OCA as an example, would that score be dependent on one or two kids doing well or not doing well possibly?
So, can I? It's perfect, perfect segue, thank you. So, on this particular, on this slide, you'll see that the way that Vermont does their accountability system, which is the expectation from the states, I mean, from the federal government, is that you can show the data on the, your district website and on the state website, if there are 11 students in that category. But you need 25 kids in order for it to be part of your accountability.
Okay.
Because the statistical size is not high enough when you're, when you only, when you have less than 25 students. When you have less than 25 or less than 11 students, that's when we get to this idea of suppression, where because the numbers are so small, it's likely that you can identify a student based on the singular numbers that you might see. The item in the middle, the accountability subset, is something that we, that they won't necessarily put on the website for the snapshot, but it's important for you to know. The only students whose scores are in our data on the state website is, are students who were enrolled on October 1st and they took the test within our district. If they were only enrolled for the first semester and they were part of our census, but then they left, they don't count in our accountability subset. If they came after October 1st and took the test, they don't count towards our accountability subset. So even though they take the test, it's great, because we'll, hopefully they stayed with us and we'll have that information for them the next year, but their numbers aren't included in this data. So these next five slides go back to the indicators. And so these percentages, these are not our scores, rather, these are the weights that the state gives to these items. So for example, the reason why there is a green rectangle around RNESU and OVU is because we are being, we're being appraised on, or being held accountable for all of those categories. So when you're talking about like a Lothrop, an Escheby, or an OCA, they're gonna be judged by just the middle column, because they don't have graduation and college career readiness and things like that. For personalization, so our participation in flexible pathways and offering of flexible pathways, we are being judged on that at the, at the district level, but not at the elementary As part of safe and healthy schools, you'll see that there were originally two components, one has not been implemented, and so the only safe and healthy school information is students who have been suspended. High-quality staffing is making sure that we have properly licensed teachers and that we're keeping those properly licensed teachers longer than just a couple of years. One of the things that hasn't been implemented yet, but we're planning on doing this year, is the staff satisfaction survey, but that's gonna be internal, that's not at the state level. And then finally, investment priorities, so there's two things. So one of them, one of them is measuring our per pupil spending, and then also our, how we're doing in relation to our EQS standards. Stop right there and see if anybody has any questions on the indicators.
Safe and healthy schools, only suspension is the indicator?
Currently, that's the only disciplinary exclusion, that's the only thing. Okay, oh, now we get into the...
Hang on, I'm a little slow on my, on my mic.
Okay.
So when you mean exclusion, is it only suspension, or is it any disciplinary action like restrained or seclusion?
No, it would just be, it would just be suspension.
Just suspension, okay.
And for any reason, suspension?
And if you're, if you have been excluded from the school, then yes. Okay, let's see. I will, so I guess, can you, yeah, you can see it up there. So follow me going to the right. Okay, so we'll start in the first one that has the little bubble that says metric. Okay, so this, this particular column right here where it says metric, this is where we're, where it, this scorecard is really what it is. And so it's kind of like a report card, but it's also a little bit like an Excel sheet, so I'll kinda share what that is. So when we're calculating our score, you, we ask, okay, so how are we doing in ELA? How are we doing in math? How are we doing in science? How are we doing in all of these things that we mentioned earlier from the indicators? So then, as we go to our right, in this red rectangle, you'll see the grades, so you'll see that the grades are kind of lumped in together. They're lumped in together, and so at this particular scale, right next to them in the green column, so this is the average test score, or something else, in the case of EQS, it would give you a range. So this is the sixth grade score right there, seventh grade score, eighth grade score. Then, we go to the blue box. This is the first time that this score right here gets turned into a scale score, so it kinda comes, becomes like a GPA. So it takes, this is that GPA, that GPA, that GPA. Then, you average, in the, in the yellow box, it becomes an average GPA for that particular Then you take the next, you go to the next level, and now it's another summary, it's another average of the, of the GPA or scale score. So now we, now we get to the actual calculation component. So we take those weights that we saw earlier, when I was showing the, the academic proficiency and safe and healthy schools, they all had weights. So now you multiply those weights by this summary score, and you get, this is your, this is your performance score. So that performance score is now, how are you doing in comparison to the, the rest of the schools in the state, and how are you doing in comparison to this, this average expectation that the state has? Then this final column is your equity score, in comparison to how you were doing the previous year. So that is a lot of calculations to get from, how did this one kid do?
So, that's an average of all the students in that grade?
As an, so that, that, from here in the green box?
Yeah.
Yes, it's an average of all the students in that grade.
So it's called no student left behind, but if you have one student that isn't making the grade, or is barely making it, or really not making it, he can still be pushed through. He cannot read, if he doesn't do well, everybody else does, he can still be pushed through.
Well, this is just a measure of that student's grade. It's not, it has nothing to do with how that student is doing. If that student isn't doing well, we need to make, like, we will be delivering the services to make sure that they can advance to the next grade.
I'll ask, because I know everybody states different, but I was in Kansas for a while, and I had a student follow me, a kid follow me from there, lived with me for a while, but...
Yeah.
The kid can barely read, and he graduated from high school. And that was after this whole no student left behind. I, I don't, I don't think it works well personally, from what I understand about it. I don't think it accentuates each student individual, I think it lumps them in, because you can't, you can't keep a student back anymore, right? Can you hold them back a grade?
There's no reason why we couldn't.
Just curious, because I was told by people that you can't, so I was just wondering how that actually worked, because if somebody's not cutting it, they're farther behind.
Well, the one thing I would push back against that, is that it actually made us start tracking dropouts and graduation, because before No Child Left Behind, people could just say, "Don't come back anymore," and there was no repercussions for that. And so now, not only do we have to graduate everybody, but we have to graduate everybody and make sure that they are reading, and if they aren't reading, that's, that's a, that's a component that is a challenge, and I, that's why we're doing this presentation now, so I can share with you what our plans are, so that that way we can, we can take that passion that you have and make sure that we do reach every student.
They don't know a ton about it, but I just know my seven-year-old can read better than he can.
Yeah.
So it's pretty sad.
Yeah.
I didn't know exactly how it worked, but I'm listening to all these grouping numbers, nothing, it didn't sound right.
Okay.
May I, are you able to let Michael in the meeting?
Uh, it's...
Colby, Colby's no longer a co-host.
Oh, I thought I had made IT a co-host, but I can't, yeah. And Stacy's not in yet either.
Yeah, I can, I'll let her know that we can.
Fernanda's in, I thought.
Oh.
No, Fernanda, Fernanda hasn't come back yet.
I think Colby said he had, he doesn't, he's not a co-host, so...
Oh. Okay, I thought I had made it, okay, there he goes. Maybe I made a, okay, so this next item, let's see...
May I ask a question about the accountability scores?
Yeah.
What's the scale? I look at a 3.1 and say, "Oh, that's, that's a low B." Is that based on a four-point scale?
It's based on, it's based on a four-point scale.
Okay. And is that interpretation I'm making a valid way to look at these numbers?
It's a, yes, it's a start, because there, we'll get to the range in a second, you'll see what they look like. So when you go to the, thank you for the questions. When you go to the websites, the Vermont Snapshot website, this is what pops up on your screen when you search for the Rutland Northeast Supervisor Union or any one of our schools. So it gives you the five indicators on the left-hand side, and then it gives you a graphic representation of the score at the very far right of that column. So in this case, we're looking at the Supervisor Union score, and if you, right above, right above the green column, you'll see that there's some, it'll be bigger in the next few slides. But if you have a very thin circle, it's not meeting, you have a little bit of a thicker circle, it's approaching, if you have a almost-filled circle, it's meeting expectations, and if it's completely filled, it is exceeding expectations. So by looking at our, if you're, by looking at our NESU's snapshot right now, you'll see that our first two items were approaching, and our final three items were meeting according to the state. The next column is, how are you doing in comparison to the previous year? And these directional arrows give you a very clear, I guess, interpretation. So the academic proficiency says we're pretty much staying the same, the, the personalization says we're on the rise, safe and healthy schools, we're heading downward, high-quality staffing, we're staying the same, and in our investment priorities, we're going up. So that is just the kind of, the quick description of the, the graphical representations. Then this orange box, this is your equity index. This is largely what we're gonna be talking about in the middle part of this presentation, is that we have achievement gaps for certain groups, and they are, they are in existence, but we are, we are closing them. So that's the good thing. This item over here to the right, that it gives you kind of how we are doing over the last three years. So for our academic performance, three years ago, we were not meeting, we've gotten better the last two, but our equity index hasn't, is still not meeting expectations. But our equity index hasn't, is still not meeting expectations. I can't really see the left-hand side. So these are, this is at the end when all of the information is put in. This is what the state says about RNSU. And to the right, what it says about Otter Valley, Millen High School. So for the summit of determination for both of them, we are not meeting expectations. And for, as far as the current performances, we have, we're doing, we're approaching on several and we're not meeting on some. And the same thing is true for the performance change. Performance change says that we're going, we're decreasing on some and getting better on some. And so we'll get to the numbers in a little bit so you can see what that really means.
May I go back to that, that score chart? It's titled.
This one?
Yes, yeah, thanks. It's calculating snapshot. Sorry, I'm not finding it on my.
Yeah, I, I moved them around to make them more understandable in the final product.
Anyway, I guess I don't need to, I don't need to worry about it, but. Got two questions. One of them's kind of this eternal question.
Sure.
And, and that is, when I think of a program like Muslum Mu, it doesn't really fit into the metric category in the left very well. And I'm worried about whether the state accounts for that. So we have this great program, kids are learning all these, these things about the outdoors and incorporating them into their, into their learning. But if, it, it's not, you know, it's not calculus. So would, would that hurt us with the state? We say we have this great program, it's keeping a lot of kids in school. It's making kids excited in all these different ways. But their math scores are not the same as AP math in Burlington. Does that hurt us?
So the. Muslum Mu would help us in the flexible pathways component. And so Muslum Mu would also, the students are going to need to be able to read and be able to do math. So at a proficient level, because that's the expectation that I believe that we have as part of this board, that they should still be able to do that at a proficient level. So that would be the goal, so it shouldn't hurt us.
Okay.
So the, the first three items up there are going to, the, the first two items, English and math, are going to be at the seventh, eighth and ninth grade level at OV. Science will be at 11th grade. But then there are also components with graduation and also components with post-secondary information that Muslum Mu could benefit us with as well.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with the, what I'm going to call the grades, the, the, those numbers on the four-point scale. And I can't find the slide. On the four-point scale. For the, the last, at least the last two years, and I think probably longer than that, at the, at the annual meeting, we've had questions about our science scores.
Right.
A lot of concern about that. And it looks like our cumulative science score on that, that chart was something like a 2.4 something, which is C. The perception, I think, in our community is that it's lower than that and that we're, we're not doing well at all with science, particularly, I think, in the sixth grade.
It's fifth, eighth and, fifth, eighth and 11th.
Okay.
And so we'll get to the actual scores.
Okay.
In a second, so you can see how the actual scores translate to the, to the scale scores.
Okay.
So these are the, these are our K6s. Lothrup and NeShabi, according to the state, are not meeting expectations. And they are, they, Lothrup is approaching all. NeShabi is approaching into not meeting in others. But they both have, their performance change is going down. This is according to last year's information. OCA is, they are meeting and they are approaching in their performance and increasing on their performance change.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with all those arrows pointing down, what are we doing? You know, plan, what are, what kind of plans are we making to potentially move them up or?
We'll get there.
Okay.
We'll get there. Okay.
We're rushing.
I just, I'm going slowly because I'm, you have, I'm really excited to be talking about this. So I'm doing all I can to just like, you know, make sure that I'm, I'm bringing people along. So this grid is what we're going to be talking about over and over and over again, especially when it comes to planning our continuous improvement plan. So all of the student group names on the left-hand side, these are, these are the student groups that the state expects us to have a ver, to have small achievement gaps between some students and these students. And so in this case, on the far right-hand side, you'll see RNSU's list. So everywhere that you see an equity one, that means that we have a significant enough gap that the state is concerned. So if you see an orange none, that means that last year we had an equity one there, but it is no longer there. So the state's not concerned about those. If you see a kind of reddish one, reddish equity one, those are new. And so the state's concerned about those. And then if you see the purple, you'll see that we have now moved from not just equity one, but we have given, we have become equity two. And there is an additional concern from the state that we need even more, we need to pay even closer attention to that school and to that category. So on the left-hand side, God, wait, I need a bigger screen. On the left-hand side are all the different student groups. But Vermont schools are generally too small to have 25 students who meet any one of those categories. So Vermont created a group called the Historically Marginalized Student Group in order to make sure that schools and districts are paying attention to the students who are typically left behind.
Can we turn that projector?
What's that?
Can we turn that?
Uh, sure. Now, no, because that's an OSHA issue. We'll be fine, we'll be fine.
Is that historically marginalized group simply adding everybody who's, you know, African-American, American Indian, Asian, Hispanic, Native Hawaiian together? Or is there, are there other elements in that as well?
So if, if you, yes, it's essentially every one of those categories. So if you get to this slide, if you get to that slide, everybody in that category on the right-hand side, that's how the, the state will review the data. African-American, non-African-American, American Indian, Alaskan Native, non. Asian, non. English learner, non. So that, that way, that's how those are being recorded.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the state isn't making any changes to the equity chart? Given new executive administration?
No, because that, that is, it's, because it's not really, it's, it's equity in name, but it's really just making sure that we're serving all of the kids. So until they change, until they change the Every Student Succeeds Act, then we would have to draw, because this is tied to that. So all this is, is just reporting, it's not receiving any extra aid. And unfortunately, we don't get any extra aid for being told that we have achievement gaps. So equity one, this kind of gets to your, your question, Kevin. Just, it looks, it looks to the, how are, how are we doing? And if there is a distance between a, one student group and another student group? And it looks at the year-to-year score to determine the, the equity gap. Equity two and three, so this is new to Lothrup. We met with the faculty this afternoon because I wanted to make sure. Thank you, Stacy, for having already kind of previewed with your faculty what equity two means. So there is a special meeting for student, for districts and schools that, that meet equity two and three. And Debbie and I and Stacy will be attending it in a few weeks to make sure that we have a, a full understanding of what this means for us and for the Supervisor Union. So we are unsure, so if you're, we already have, we know that there's an achievement gap. But then there are two other criteria that could possibly lead you to be equity two. Either one, your achievement gap decreased, but it's because your general population scores went down. Or your, your, your group, your historically marginalized group or whatever group that is in concern, did not increase very much and is in the lowest 5% of all equity one schools in improvement. So we're not sure which one of those characteristics we have met. So we'll find out from the state what that means for us. Okay, now we're to our scores as a district. So if you go horizontally, those are apples to, I'm sorry, apples to oranges. So if you were in third grade in 2022, you took the S back. You're now, that kid is now in, or took the fifth grade VT cap last year. But then there was another third grader who took it in '23 and another third grader who took it in '24. So those are the apples to oranges. And if you look at the next column, which is the year-over-year change, that's just measuring VT cap because I didn't want to compare S back to VT cap. Then the next column is two-year longitudinal change. So those are students, you'll see that they share colors. So for example, in the, the third graders in 2022 became the fourth graders in 2023 and the fifth graders in 2024. So they, if you follow them diagonally, those are apples to apples. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Except the test was different.
Right. So if you go, so if we're looking at VT cap 2023 for the third graders, there were 38% comparing them to oranges. The next year, it was 43% and there was a 5% improvement. If they did. If they did 38 to 39, they, that was an improvement of 1%. You see, for the class of 32. But it looks, it may be a little confusing because it looks like it's 54% to 39%, negative 15%. Well, that's because it's straight across. It's the, it's the one column after that shares the same color. And I wanted to make sure that, as you'll see later, that we start talking about our students as class of. Because like Brent was saying, we're not going to just pass kids up, but we need to make sure that we recognize that we're in one system together to make sure that everybody graduates on time. So this is our ELA scores.
And do we, do we put extra focus on those grades or that class?
Right, so.
Right, because like the one had a negative 17%. That's pretty large.
So please keep in mind that these are, so we were just barely allowed to share these officially with the community last month. So I, yes, I shared them with you guys earlier on. But this is something that we've had to, to work on. And so this is why we're giving this presentation again now. So that that way, as we're writing the continuous improvement plan over the next couple of months, which will come to y'all for approval in first in May and then again in June, that you see that we have these plans in place. The unfortunate thing is that because we really just got this data and were able to share this officially, it's hard for us to put it into the budget. So we're going to be making do with what we have going into next year, what we've budgeted for. And so the changes that we're planning on making will be as strong as we can this coming year. But we will, you'll be hearing about our, any budget asks that we have within our system going into early next year. And we'll have the data, we'll also have the 2025 data to go with it as well, as, along with all of our interim assessment data to prove what we would need to prove to the board. So this is our math data. It is lower, it is lower than our English data. So this is an area of emphasis that we will be coming back to as well. And we can come, and we can have, we can definitely spend a lot more time over the next few months as we're developing the continuous improvement plan, showing you what we, how we're planning on addressing it. Kevin, here's your request for science data.
Oh, thank you.
So you can see that it's only measured three times while students are with us. And typically, less than a third of our students will pass the test. Sometimes less than a quarter. So that is definitely a need that we will have as well. I included these, these next few slides, we can go through them fairly quickly. But I think I really wanted to emphasize the grids on the bottom so that you can see the concerns that we have in the student groups for which we are in equity one. So on the left-hand side, you'll see student groups free and reduced lunch, special education, historically marginalized. The first two columns are students who met that criteria. The second two columns are the students who did not meet the criteria. So you really want to compare where it says yes proficient and no proficient. That gives you an idea of the difference between the students who are not succeeding. Who are, I'm sorry, give you an idea of how well the students who are meeting, who are identified in those categories and who are not identified in those categories. So for example, in the first one, students who are receiving free and reduced lunch, they are at 33% proficient. But our students who are not receiving it are at 57% proficient. Special education, 5%. Not proficient, I mean proficient, but not special education, almost 50, or over 50% and so forth. That's in English. This is math. So as we already saw, we are lower in math to begin with. And so the gaps won't necessarily be as wide, but they start off much lower. And then finally, this is the science gap. It's a little bit harder because there's not as many. As you can see from up above where we have a lot of areas where the, because we have less than 12 students, it's really hard to get that data. So we, we're going to really have to monitor it school by school and try to see how we can make sure that they have access to it. But we have, Debbie, we'll talk about a program that we're accessing for literacy that's going to help us for science. Okay. So now we're moving on to other components. This is going to be our graduation rate. So I went back to 2019. So the first two columns are the four-year graduation rate, so Otter Valley and Vermont. The second two columns are the Otter Valley six-year and the Vermont six-year. So going back to 2019, which is prior to the pandemic, we had a 74% graduation rate for four years and an 88% graduation rate for six years. Six years later, we have a 72% graduation rate and a 75% six-year graduation rate. So in, with the exception for the year of the pandemic, I think 2021, we exceeded the state in graduation. So there are, this, the definition of a graduation rate is you start off in ninth grade and you finish four years later, whether it's at this school or another school. But you would have started four years ago. Same thing with the six-year. So. Okay. Again, so these next, I'm going to go really quickly through these because these are really, really busy. But in addition to the graduation rate, there's, there are components for how students are, how students are doing after they leave us. So on the left-hand side is our measures like ACT, Advanced Placement, College Course Completion, Industry Recognized Credentials, SATs and Work Keys. So if students complete those while they are with us, they will show up there. So for our graduating class of, of 2024, I believe. So for our graduating class of, of 2024, I believe, because I wasn't able to get enough information from, from the AOE to determine if that final column was 23 or 24. So we'll just say 24 for now. So that is how they, how the students did on their, on their exit, on their college-level exit criteria. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the percentage of the graduating class who enrolled in college within 16 months of graduation. So, and that's trending upward. So we also have access to an item that you'll see above. I'll, I'll be able to, to present it in a different fashion where we have percentages. But we have the ability to now go back and see how our students are doing back to the students who graduated in 2018 to see if they've graduated, if they've enrolled, graduated from college, enrolled, continued, what type of institution they attended. And so I think that would be great for the board to know. And then we'll also be able to review it via gender, free, reduced lunch, special education.
Do we not keep track of Stafford and what trade schools they go to? That's also NA.
If they go, oh, this, oh, that is, that would come from the state. So we don't, we don't get that data. But if they go to like, say, a CCV or they go to another, another college, like the one out in Utah that's escaping me right now.
Plumbing or auto, or auto body, auto mechanics, none of that stuff.
So if, no, if they go, if they go to college for, like if they're enrolled in, if they have a college outcome, it gets measured. Let's see. Oh, and then this is just an example of, so six years ago, our class of 2018, we can see that 42% of the females who graduated from OV met a degree, met the level of degree. And the 47 males, 21.3% of them received a degree. So we're able to produce this information as well and would love to have another opportunity to share that with the board. So now we will, Debbie and I will team up. So getting back to your question, Paul, about what are we planning on doing about it? Is that we know that there are components that we have to really begin to work as, as a system and have it work from, you know, from, from central office to the administrators, to the teachers, to the students, to the families, so that everybody knows what it is that we're working on. So our area of emphasis are going to be attendance, academic performance and growth, behavior and social-emotional learning, graduation and college career and life readiness. And so these are things that we know that we have to, that kind of has to be our mantra. That these are the things that we as a board or will monitor me as I'm monitoring the global ends and making sure that we're emphasizing these things for us. So underneath is the ways that we're going to measure that. So we'll be using the STAR 360. Debbie, we'll talk about something called Amplify. We're going to be looking at the VT cap. Of course, we'll be monitoring Power School. Information from EdDocs for our special education students. Data from Stafford and Hanford, National Student Clearinghouse, Swiss, Sabers, Panorama. We're going to be monitoring all of those components so that we can come back to the board with regular reports on the global ends to make sure that we are all on the same page, talking about the same things. So if you want, Debbie, if you want to do this one, you can do this one.
I can, sure. So really, you know, great questions about what are we doing? The good news is, is that we, when I took a position last year, we knew where we were and we already got started on a lot of things last year and put them in motion this year. So that is part of the good news. And we have more plans for next year. So in thinking about attendance for last year, we put in some components that really did improve some of our attendance numbers. Definitely not where we want them to be. But we also updated the procedures for, for this year. We added some automation of notifications and we added more expectations at the schools when we do have these high numbers of absences. As far as college career and life readiness, I don't know if anybody attended the, the career fair, but we had that here at Otter Valley Friday. And I know we're sending a group of kids to Vermont University at the end of the month, I think, to the, back to the trades fair at Vermont University. And then of course, we have, this year we implemented PSAT administration for all 10th and 11th graders. And then we're working on the, our OV having an SAT day where kids can take the SAT here.
And I don't know if this would go in here or would go into graduation. We're starting that middle school welding program or the STEM program. So keeping students interested in staying in school and either continuing the program here or utilizing the resources that are available at Stafford.
Right. And there, we, Otter Valley does also offer a, a career readiness class in middle school as well. So that's helpful. Thinking about graduation, we have a strong MTSS that we, you know, each year I've been, you know, as a principal and then moving into this position, more of our schools have come on board with their strong multi-tiered system of support program. We, the Otter Valley has the Foothills program, which helps support students staying in school instead of dropping out. So helping them catch up with credits. And that serves, I think, 10, around 10 or, I don't know if Michael's on here. But that serves a number of our students. Lots of flexible pathways, which you saw, we are actually growing in that realm. We also have a portrait of a graduate, yeah, 12 per year in Foothills. That was close. Thank you, Michael. Portrait of a graduate. We need, we are going to be doing some more work on that. And that really identifies when we have, we've done it here before at Otter Valley, but it was before the pandemic. We need to do some more work to identify when our students leave Otter Valley. What does, what do we want that to look like? What does that student look like? We do have at the grades K through A, we have a portrait of a learner. And that tells at each grade level what the expectations are. Those have been used throughout the years, but those could use a little facelift as well. As far as academic performance and growth, I spoke to you last year that we were bringing on a consultant for our K six, our K six teachers as well as our K 12 special educators and interventionists. And as of the end of March, we will have completed a full year of professional development. And I want to speak to Brent's piece about the reading piece. This is designed for us to be thinking about our learners in kindergarten and second grade, really through third grade, and making sure that they have the best reading instruction that we can provide. And because as kids get older, it's really hard to catch them up the further, you know, the fact, the farther, the farther the gap, the larger the gap, it's just much harder. So it really focuses on those K through three. However, the instruction did go K six as well as some, for some of our teachers who are serving students, our older students that are, that need extra support. We also, I spoke to you last year that we wrote a grant to purchase all the materials to transition our math program to Bridges Three. That has a lot more components in it that really will help to include all learners in the math conversation so that it's just accessible to more students. I think that that would be the best way to describe that. We did a pilot year last year. We did an early adopter year this year. And then everybody will be on board by next year, and that's a K five program. We just adopted after a years, almost a year's worth of work of a team working on researching reading programs. And we adopted, it's Amplify is the program. And it's a really wonderful program that we will be able to track students' learning very easily. It's not sort of, oh, we have to take this assessment and it's not really connected to the learning. Every, it's all embedded. It's M-class is the assessment system. And it does screening, it does diagnostic, and it really helps us pinpoint. And I'm thinking back to that K three, it really pinpoints what, what skills our students are missing. And then it provides lots, it provides extra tiers of layered intervention as well. So that's a really good, all-inclusive program. And thinking about the science piece that Renee spoke about, it is really content-heavy. So it, we will be able to take the units that are in the, in each grade level and go ahead and do the work this coming year to build sort of a science scope and sequence so that we can strengthen that. It doesn't make sense if our kids are reading, you know, something on the rainforest. It doesn't make sense to be doing something in science on electricity. Why not, you know, make sure that we're aligning them so that we make good use of our time, quite honestly. We are also in the process right now of adopting, well, researching to adopt a grade six through eight, but it's really Algebra I program. So that, because as you saw with our math scores, that's where we really are, we're sort of, as I've said before, we sort of intervene our way out of, out of primary. And then we sort of get to sixth grade and then we kind of flatline and even decrease. So we are looking for a math program. There really has not been a math program at Otter Valley. They've been sort of looking at the standards and creating their own materials. So using bits and pieces of programs. So it's really time that we put something solid in place and the PD will come along with that. And as I said, PD to support both programs. And then the early release times and intervention or in-service will be spent really making sure that everybody is on board with all of those programs and be able to support those. When I look at our screening scores, like our STAR data, it really is that, you know, it's our early learner, it's our students that are in our eighth, ninth and, ninth and 10th that are not doing as well on the screening as our students in math that are, like, have made it to 11th and 12th grade. So our VT cap scores do not show that. But that's also a result of, of how we're structured. And Michael has shifted some of the scheduling for next year to allow for math every day. So we believe they were doing like an A day, B day. So that should really help as well with having that consistency of math sort of every day rather than trying to pull yourself back into thinking about math after not doing it for a day. Yes, Barbara?
Will math be all year long?
I think it is for, I think they've got some programs. Michael, are you able to hear that?
Yeah. Thanks for the question. So middle school math has always been year-round. It was historically on an A, B rotation. So kids had it every other day for the year. We've reworked the schedule where we, in the middle school, we have, sorry, I have a crying baby here. We have 45 or 43-minute classes every day for the year in math, ELA and the other core subjects. In the high school, we have typically done it on a semesterized basis. Next year for our ninth graders, they will have a full year of blocked math. So they will have, the equivalent of two credits of math each year. So 80 minutes every day for the year to really focus on closing that gap by the end of grade nine. I don't know how much of that you heard, but if you have any questions, let me know.
All of it. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. And to piggyback on top of that, we're also looking at how do we provide some solid intervention for the learners in ninth grade that we recognize are behind and how do we fill in some of those gaps? So that, that year-long and full 80-minute blocks will be really helpful. So thinking about behavioral, social-emotional learning, our school counselors this year, their grades K through eight are actually involved in a cohort up north of school counselors. They go about once a month. And then they are articulating a school counseling model for K eight that really supports the social-emotional learning of our younger, of our younger children. And making sure that we have sort of like, these are the basic things that we're going to do at all schools so that we're all on the same page. And when they get together, they can, you know, have common, common thoughts and they're working on common things. So that's, that's going really well this year. I look forward to seeing what they have at, you know, at the end of the year. We're almost there. So we are looking at building some sort of success suite in each school. And that is a, it's not a planning room. It's not an escalation room, de-escalation room. It's more of a space that is designed for student, learners with, with plans that they could sort of go, you know, it might be a proactive break. They may spend a smaller chunk of their day in there. It's really to be, the whole idea of a success suite is to be proactive in nature. So we've identified what a student needs and then that, that room can help support that work. PBIS, we will continue that work. We will continue our work through our education support team. We certainly have strengthened that. We always have more work to do there. And Renee spoke to you earlier in the year about Playful. That is our social and emotional app, if you will, that provides instant counsel. It's, they're really coaches, right, Renee?
Coaches.
Yeah, coaches to our students and that's at OVUU and BUU. So we also, I didn't put that on there. We also are looking at bringing in a person to each of our schools to work with them on restorative practices, to really help out with, to really support teachers in, in the classroom and building those communities in the classroom in order to navigate when things, when things don't go as planned. We all know that when something happens with a student, that there's always a fracture there. Something's always fractured and we can get back to work once that repair has been done. And it's really helpful to have sort of those, those skills. I will say that it's been, it's been a really long time since our district has done professional learning that was for everyone at a certain band, like, so all K six students or all K six teachers. So I'm very hopeful that we're going to see some good outcomes in the coming years with this work that our teachers have done. So.
Thank you, Debbie. Any questions for Debbie?
So are we doing, we're not doing block scheduling or are we doing so many, like every class every, every day?
Meaning at the high school?
Yeah.
So they still have an A day and a B day for the high school?
Yes, but, but, so like when my son went here years ago, he had, I don't know, he had some kind of a math for the first half of the year. In the second half, he might not have a math because he had something else.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So how do you figure that works? So when he was here, last half of the year, he didn't have math. And then the whole first half of the next year, he didn't have math. So you've been a whole year with no math and he's supposed to jump right back into it? The second half of the year?
Well, and that's what they're saying. They're changing.
Oh, that's what they're, I'm sorry.
They changed that. Believe me.
I missed that part. Sorry.
So that's, but, but you're not wrong on this. So that's changed for ninth grade and we're going to see what we get from the outcomes there. The other, there are other classes in 10th, 11th and 12th that are still in that A day, B day possibly. So a lot of this is working on, that Michael's working on at the scheduling at the high school level. Because.
Because I know I really messed them up for a while.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Classes really 80 minutes long, like every?
Every other day?
You want to answer that one, Brooke?
Yes, they are in the high school.
And I mean, do, do kids pay attention for 80 minutes? You know what I mean? Like, has there ever, has there ever been talk about like shortening? Because like, I'm thinking back when I went to high school and this just kind of sounds, 80 minutes is a long time. I can't even think about that. Has, has there ever been talk about like shortening the classes so that you can fit more in the day?
Well, then you would have, I mean, I don't know. Historically, have, has there been a seven-period or a six-period day?
That's what it was when I was here. We had same classes, same schedule. From beginning, we had every class, every day. So you never went without math, you never went without English, any of it. You had it every day for the whole year. Came back next year and did the same thing. And you're in there, I don't know, it was 43-minute classes, something like that.
Yeah, so there are benefits and, you know, detriments to, to the both sides. So when you have a longer, when you have a longer period, if you're only teaching one lesson, then yeah, it's going to be really, really difficult. lesson, then yeah, it's going to be really, really difficult. But when you have an eighty-minute period, you can have, it's basically two days' worth of time. And depending upon your high school, you have fewer transitions. So when I was a high school principal, I wanted as few transitions as possible because if you have, if you have eight periods a day, that means that the kids are in the hallway nine or ten times.
Yeah, but you only had like, you only had like six minutes. You got your stuff, you went to class.
A lot of...
And when you weren't in class, so it happened, you were in trouble.
A lot of those six minutes, a lot can happen in those six minutes.
I understand that, but the ones that didn't follow it were reprimanded for it.
The other benefit though, is that they get to do their work in class. So I would say my stu, my kids have less homework than what I had when I was in high school because they were spent, you know, just listening to lecture where now they have some time to get their work done.
It's absolutely incumbent on the teacher to come up with, I taught in university courses of seventy-five minutes for many years. It's really easy to lose them after fifty, really easy. So...
I'd lose it. I couldn't.
Switching up somehow, giving them a five-minute break just to fool around in class, things like that are, are very important.
Thank you for the question. Okay. So as we move into the writing of the, the Continuous Improvement Plan, we're going to be providing the principals and the schools these sentence stems for all of the different categories of attendance, academic performance, behavior, graduation, cause of re-renas, if it applies to them. So that that way we have a, a common place to start from. Because we, as, as was already mentioned, the test that we are talking about is actually, the window for that test has actually started, right Debbie?
Monday.
So it started Monday. So we, so as we're writing this Continuous Improvement Plan, we are writing it for the next, the year after this coming year. But we are doing this, we are holding our expectations that we are going to start implementing actions going into, well, at the end of this year, professional development over the summer and going into next year. So the expectation is that these changes, the, the scores that we're expecting for next year, they're going to be pretty modest because, but we want, you know, we want them to, we want the schools to come up with them. So going into the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we're going to want those goals that are being set to be a lot more vibrant. Because they will have had two years with the curriculum, two years with this, with the expectation and knowledge of this data. So going into next year, we just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and working all around the same things. And that's it.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yep. So this is a very full plate that you're presenting. It's really, really full for the teachers. And I'm just trying to figure out, um, you talk about, I would love to hear more about your professional development ideas and early release ideas. I'm building the community of teachers the same way that you would think about building the community of students in a classroom so that they have the capacity to make the changes and they, and be able to, to support the students in the ways that you are hoping to see, right? Because there's a lot on these plates and I'm just really...
Thanks for having me. Or some reason I thought...
I'm also wondering how that is going to feel for the teacher and, and how they're being supported to make, to make those changes in implementing new programs and changing, you know, the ways that they're doing things. So I would love to at some point hear more about the professional development that teachers are going through and how they're being supported in making these changes. Because really, that's where the rubber meets the road, right? It's how the capacity of the teacher to implement all of these great ideas with the students and be able to interact with them on a daily basis to make the changes they're looking for.
Sure. Fernanda, thank you. So we've actually already started that work. The, all this year, the work for the Reading League has been around building capacity for teachers to, some of them could have taught the course themselves. This is all about everybody having the same knowledge of evidence practices in the science of reading. So that sort of puts all of the, all of the professional development to understand that in place. And then next year, well, we already have a June PD session and we took, we listened to our teachers and our, we have a strong teacher leader group that has really worked with us on this a lot. And we are, we heard that everyone was looking for the professional development to understand the new program in June. So they'll get something in June and then something in August. And what we've been running, and I think it's been pretty successful, is sort of a morning of learning and then you have the afternoon to work with your team on sort of what you just learned, you know, working on units. Next year, they'll have, those morning times might be a learning block and then the afternoon they can again go back, you know, explore in their programs. We will continue our work with our teacher leaders. So for early release days, speaking about the new programs, those will be dedicated to really unpacking those programs. It will be sort of their time in a very structured way to understand the programs, how, how students are doing, what they need next. We also will be putting aside money for consultancy. So for example, during those early release days, we can put a consultant from Amplify sort of on an iPad and anybody who has questions, anything that they want to talk about, that we can sort of reach out to them right there so they can answer those questions right on the spot. It's, that part's actually relatively inexpensive and it's good, it's good money to spend to be able to give that on-the-spot support without, while still letting teachers have those two hours for, during early release time to really dive into their programs and understand them well. So I appreciate you asking that.
We can't, we didn't even talk about it at all. I just, the numbers were up there. The special education test results. And then we just talked about our improvement plan. We didn't mention it at all. So I'm a little bit concerned about that because those were low single digits. And are we, are we just accepting failure there? It seems like...
No, so, no, good question. So when I talked about Amplify, I mentioned that it supported multiple tiers of learning. That was one of the draws, one of the many draws to the program, is that it really does have a comprehensive system for supporting learners at multiple tier, you know, multiple tiers of, of support. So that is sort of a lot of the work that will be helpful. Also, our, we actually just finished up a session where we pulled all of our, just our special educators together and they worked with one of the consultants from the Reading League on how do you, you know, how do we think about the, the practices from the science of reading? How do we take that and work with our learners that it just may take longer for them to learn how to read? What are the different strategies that we can use? What are, you know, how can we assess students in, in different ways who have different, different needs? And that, so our Reading League work will continue next year. It will just be more specialized into sort of like meeting with the special educators, meeting with the interventionists, meeting with different groups, likely something with our high school teachers that they're thinking about older learners who are, who have, you know, lagging skills in reading, you know, how they might address that. So we'll go from a model of everybody getting the foundational support to what do we need in these really specialized pieces from the Reading League next year, so.
Additionally, thank you Debbie. Additionally, we have just completed, well, we have a preliminary report for our special education audit. So we will be able to share that out once the final report comes out. And it will enable us to be able to, to look big picture. What can we do to improve the system? And then secondly, one of the other things that is critical when it comes to looking at, at data like the kind that we showed, is that if you are, if you're on a NAEP, when you access a test or any kind of assessment, you are to receive accommodations and modifications so that you can show that with those accommodations and modifications, you can perform at grade level. So that isn't, that is an area that we emphasize this year. So we will see if that, by doing that, our scores will go up. If not, we will make sure that it is utilized from the very beginning of the year through, through next year. Because when the students have access to those things, and even general ed students have access to some of the accommodations, if, when those are enacted, students will do better because they can access it at the grade level.
Did they have accommodations a couple of years ago? For like the Vermont cap or they did, or S-BAC?
Yeah, it's really emphasizing making sure that they're practicing. Use it like the guidance that went out this year was about making sure that classroom teachers are going through the practice tests with students and not just saying like, hey, practice, but open, you know, putting it up on their smartboard or their projector and, or up on their projected screen and showing them where all of the embedded tools are. And then with students who have accommodations, it's really practicing that all throughout the year, making sure that they either access their accommodations or making sure that they have it so that it's something that they're using all the time. So that's something that should be happening, but really making it explicit and connecting that, connecting the line between the work that they do every day with being able to show their work, you know, show what they've learned in, in VT cap.
I just wonder because my son, I mean, he graduated last year, but I don't remember him having lots of extra days to complete it. It was, he had to work on it in the time period that he had.
Yeah, there isn't, there actually...
So that's what I mean by accommodation.
If they, if they, if typically they are given extra time, then they should have been given extra time.
Right. And I will say that even though they give us a window for about how much, how long it should take, that's only for scheduling. I know when I was the principal at Lowthorpe, we had lots of kids that took almost double time. So that isn't really even something that we, so that, that accommodation, we would know that and plan for that student, for that accommodation. And if another student ran over, we would figure that out after, how to support them.
First, I want to thank you for the presentation. This kind of granular data is very, very enlightening and, and useful. And I think it helps all of us understand what our challenges are a lot better than perhaps we did before. I certainly feel that way about myself. I have a question about the historically marginalized student group.
Sure.
When we add in students on IEPs and free and reduced lunch students included in that group, what numbers are we talking about? It seems, those are fairly large, those two groups alone, I think would be fairly large. And, and also what percentage of our student body is that?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'm, if I remember correctly, it's easily over fifty percent.
Over fifty percent. So I, I just want to say to the people, anybody who's watching late at night, this is the reality of public schools. People who complain that the schools don't have, you know, we're not graduating enough kids into the Ivy League or something, this is the reality. Over fifty percent of our kids are marginalized, need help or, or have lower outcomes than we would like. And, and that's, that's what we have to work on. And then I think even added that, looking at the outcomes at the, at the very end of the presentation, it seems like there's a fair number of boys in the left-hand side, the historically privileged group, who aren't doing well because the numbers for, for males are, are pretty low. So we have a lot of challenges in this community. We need your support. And, and then, and you have to understand that this is what public schools do. That means everybody's included and, and, and that means there's a lot of extra work to make sure that everybody does well. Okay, I'm off my high horse now.
Did you say we're trying to bring welding back to Otter Valley?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are Grant.
That was theirs again?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a Grant, right?
Yeah, it's a Grant.
Yeah, there was a Grant.
From the work, from the Department of Labor or Workforce, one of those guys.
Other questions for Renee or Debbie?
Have a random one. Debbie, in the lower grades, are we still, if there's a kid that is being disruptive, are we stopping class or are we taking that child out? So we don't lose any of that time for those kids and have to, you know...
Yep.
Do a roller coaster.
Yeah. So that's part of the reason for the success suite, so that we sort of identify when we know that that student regularly has, you know, challenges, that they may, you know, it's better to have twenty minutes in the success suite, sort of pulling things together, than to lose a whole afternoon and nobody get anything done. So that's going to help out a lot with that. We, we do have, we did write a procedure about clearing the classroom earlier this year. And that, the idea is that if you had to err on the side of which way we land, we should be, you know, helping students out of the classroom as quickly and safely as we can when they, you know, when they have those hard moments and they, you know, need to find some space that's other than the classroom. So the, really, the, a clearing of the classroom should really be, you know, if there's like no other, no other option and we really need to help both the students in the classroom and the student that is dysregulated at that time. And we just need to do that until we can get the student out safely, so, yeah.
Who's going to be running the success suite? Like, what staff members?
Yeah, so we're, Brian Crane, the Director of Student Services, and myself are working on that right now. As Renee mentioned, we, you know, we had to put a budget in place. Brian was new this year, so we're sort of working with what the, you know, staff that we have. And it has nothing to do with the staff, it's about what positions everybody holds. We have fabulous staff. So right now, we have one success suite. Each school has a, something a little different, but we're trying to make some commonalities across the district. And right now, we have, it's dual-funded between special ed funding and regular ed, general fund, general ed funding. And we have two intervention specialists. So those are your peer educators who have tons of experience. And so, and they, they have to have a certain skill set. They have to be able to know that when that student comes in, this is their plan. It's not sort of, hey, come on in and hang out. It's, here's the written plan, this is what you're doing. So they have to have a, and, and the Lowthorpe ones, it runs beautifully in that way. We are looking at, do we have the staff to have a special educator that's involved in, in the success suite so that we have sort of that licensed teacher as far as, you know, we could open that up to maybe, you know, somebody comes down there to get a portion of their lesson or something so that we can just be, we have more options that way, so. Yeah, but it's, they're, the idea is they will be, at Lowthorpe, we had a student support leadership team. Every school has something like that. But those, those teams work really closely with, with the student support leadership team that involves a school counselor. If there are any developmental health people on staff or psychologists, anything like that, sometimes a special educator, student support professionals, principal. So it's definitely all well-connected.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Well, thank you Renee and Debbie for that. It's very enlightening. We're moving on to a monitoring report, two-point-three, financial conditions and activities. That should be in your packet. Can I get someone to make a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kevin and Natalie. Any discussion regarding, anything you'd like to say about? Any discussion regarding, anything you'd like to say about 2.3?
2.3 was really long, so I apologize for that. But I really appreciate that it, it really forces me to get better at the financial side of the House and understand the components that we share out in our financial reports and our, and our audits. So take a look, take a look at it when you get a chance. It's, it's, it's intense. A lot of links down at the bottom. The only other thing that I really enjoy about it is that much of the, the expectation is not created by our policy, it's actually created by state law. So I linked in those state law, the state laws as a way for you to follow where it is that we're getting our authority from.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all of those that have accepted monitoring report 2.3, financial conditions and activities, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, moving forward. Governing style, we have two monitoring reports of our own to look at. The first one is 4.5, board members' code of conduct. This is always a good one to have right as we reorganize. In looking at that one, does anyone have any adjustments that they want to make to it or questions that they have?
I can project it.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see.
I think it's a couple, actually.
Yeah.
It's three.
Yep.
Oh, we fell out a lot of it, didn't we?
That's it?
Okay. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. We also have board monitoring report 4.6, the board committee principles. And since we do have a couple of committees, namely negotiations, and we also have our new facilities committee, this might be relevant. We should probably add those. And we have HACCP, I forgot about that one.
We could take out task force.
Yeah, we can take out the task force and we'll add facilities. So essentially, the second one, we're, we're going to change task force to save facilities. Right? Okay.
It's mentioned a couple of times.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, task force was a one and done on the right column of number five. Facilities would not be one and done yet.
Well, it might be a one and done, we're not sure. But, yeah, okay.
If it is, it won't matter. None of our policies will matter anymore, anyway.
All right, so we'll change that as well. All right, that's great. All right, we'll make those changes. Are there any other changes anybody wanted? So essentially, we're just changing task force to facilities, and we're changing the task force from a one and done to currently meeting. Okay. All right, what we've all been waiting to hear about tonight, annual meeting and election debrief, budgets, next steps. So as everyone knows, our budget was passed by a vote of 817 to 816. Wow. So all of those who were the last minute voters, thank you very much, you all made it happen.
You're the one.
Yep.
You are the one.
You are the one, that's right. Who says that, that's right, who says that voting doesn't matter?
Are they going to do the recount?
So I do not believe that there's a recount process or a petition for that, that would have to come out within 10 days of the vote, which would be the end of this week. But there is a petition out there currently regarding a revote, and they do have 30 days from within the date of the, of the vote from March 5th, or was it March 5th? Yeah. I have seen the petitions in Pittsburgh. I haven't seen any signatures on the one that I saw, so I don't know. And they do need to get 5% of the registered voters of all six towns, which I believe is 365.
Per town?
No, no, total. They just get 365 people to, registered voters within the six towns to sign the petition in order for a revote.
They need 5% from each town?
It's just 5% of the registered voters total, so it's not-
So it could be all of Pittsburgh.
It could be, you know, if every, someone wanted to go out door to door. But I, I've watched a lot of rumblings on, on Facebook, I never comment. Brett, you are very, very crazy to even suggest, although I did like the one that you said was like, if you don't like it, why don't you join the board? And I was like, ah! But anyway.
I tried to stop. We do have a night board.
I know. But, anyway, so, yeah, so that's kind of where we're, and we do need two, two additional members here, we're still looking for whiting, and we're, now we need an at-large seat as well. So if it's okay with everyone, we will put that out in a newspaper article and on our social media, seeing if we get any bites for a letter of intent to want to join the board.
And I'll be out, I'll be out at whiting again, probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
In the interest of transparency, could we ask for a recount as the board?
I don't think you need to do that, only because I know that it was counted two to three times that night, because they wanted to make sure that there was no error. So I, that's why I would not suggest that we do that. And Sue Gage did put something somewhere, I read in her, somewhere that, that, I think it was in the reporter-
It was.
That they, that they did count it twice, and that there wasn't, you know, that they knew that it was 817 to 816.
There was four that were clearly one way or the other.
Right. Yeah, so if you read that, so I, I don't think we want to do that. And honestly, as a board, we want to move forward, we don't want to go back. And we'll just see what happens with this recount, but I don't, I don't think it's going to have legs. I would think that we would have seen a lot of signatures already or, or rumblings in all the towns. I'm not, I talked to some secondary people and they didn't even know about it, so.
It's too easy, where's the thrill?
I know, right? Exactly, so.
Leave where your town office get the petition, right?
Yes, when a town office would receive it, yeah. Yeah, and it can be any of the town offices.
Well, we need one for each of the offices. We have one from Lester. You need the one person in each district to petition for a recount.
Yep.
For the revote, you need the five person.
Right. That's right.
I personally hand counted those votes, so.
Yes, you did.
Why?
Just to be sure.
Yep. Is there anything else you want to say about the budget?
No, I'm just very happy that it passed, even though it was by a whisker.
Well, it-
And, and it is, so, yes, we, we have, and this is in my informational report, too. So of course, we're going to encourage, you know, the democratic process, we're not going to say, don't do it. But what I will say is that we can actually move forward with hiring, we can actually move forward with professional development, we can get ready for next year. Now that you've seen our data, you know that we have a heavy lift. If we have to have a revote, then that's what, 60 days?
Yeah.
From now? So that gets us to almost June.
How much can be done in 60 days?
Well, it's, it's-
Actually, it's longer than that. I mean, if the, if we don't get notified of a research for 30 days, and then it takes us 60 days to do a vote, we wouldn't even vote until June.
And then if it fails, then we are set back really far.
So we would be, we would be, not be able to really, depending upon the budget that we're able to produce, not necessarily be able to hire people, which would be really difficult. And then some of the, most of the plans to account for the data that you just saw, we'll have to, you know, we'll, we'll be making do because we, it's not like we can stop because we still have to serve the kids. We'll just have to move forward with what we have.
Well, yeah, and I think we should say a huge thank you to all the voters who did turn out-
Absolutely.
Because if they hadn't come out, we would not be where we are right now. So, and this just, this just means that votes do matter, so.
I think we need to think for next year, assuming there won't be a revote, about a presentation. I went to the Brandon Town presentation, and I think they did a better job than we did of, of highlighting simple things. For instance, they had a stat about how much your house, house had to be worth for your taxes to go up $100. We'd need to break that out into six different presentations, but it might be worth doing. The, the very, you know, of course, we have to talk about the yield, and we have to talk about the CLA and so forth, but, but to make something visually simple and, and to hit on basic points, how much will your taxes go up in, in the given year? What does this mean for your town? I think that might help us a lot. Because I do think there's a fair amount of suspicion and confusion out there that, that we can, we can at least attempt to alleviate, and I think that kind of simplicity would help do that.
Anything else regarding the budget? We should talk about the letter of resignation from Charlene. Charlene notified us before the annual meeting that she was stepping down from her position of clerk. And actually, I think she stepped down from all of them and everything that she was doing, so.
She was retiring, retiring.
Yeah, essentially.
All across the board.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think, I don't know how many years she's been with us, but I, she's been with us forever, so I think that we need to do something really special for her, and I don't know what that is, but if anybody has any suggestions, I think it would mean something coming from the board.
Her new set of golf clubs.
Yeah, well, there we go, she liked that, actually.
Actually, a, a membership to like Nashabee Golf Club or something.
Speaking of budgets.
Well, even if it comes from us personally, you know, we can all chip in and do something. I think it's important that we show our support for all the years that she did our minutes and, and-
For sure. Absolutely.
Yeah.
I-
Especially you as board clerk.
As former clerk, I am eternally grateful for her. Attendance, yeah, almost flawless attendance at these meetings.
Yeah, even online, you know, she couldn't be here. So, yeah, so it's super different. So in that regard, Amber Lee has said that she is willing to step up into that position, at least for a while.
Yes.
Perfect, so we really appreciate it, and thank you for being with us. All right, page two. Community linkage, board member recruitment. We just talked about open seats, whiting in the at-large position, so if you know anybody, please have them write a letter of intent to Melinda, and we'll see it at our next meeting. Welding program discussion regarding tariffs and potential increase in costs.
Want to take that one?
Oh, yeah, and Brenda, you're online, too, right there she is.
Yes, I am.
So with the additional costs that could come about as a result of whether it's the materials that will be used for the welding program, or the materials that are being, that are going to help us build the program for the, for the construction of it, we know that there are going to likely be cost overruns. So I guess Brenda and Michael, if you wanted to be more, provide more specifics about it, I'll be happy to turn it over to you.
I'll just start, and then Michael can, can fill in. We've been on a bit of a roller coaster as we started to investigate cost and discover and move towards on the project. And at one point, just two weeks away, we thought we were going to be coming and asking for a lot more money, but due to tireless efforts on Devon's part and a lot of research, we are down to about, currently estimating a potential shortfall of about $20,000, and which is a lot less than we were. At one point, a couple of weeks ago, we were hitting 75,000, but due to those changes, which are not affecting the, the number of units or the quality of the, of the units or impacting negatively on the program, but just getting better numbers and a little bit more redesign, we are asking that you grant us authority to spend up to $20,000 from the facility reserve fund. The total grant is $114,000. Our, our budget right now is just about exactly at that. And so it's, starting a project like this makes us, especially me, a little bit uncomfortable not having any contingency for some of the other things that come up as unknowns as we actually get into running wires and connecting it. Michael, do you, you want to add, add your, your point of view, please?
Well, just go, going back a little bit, I know we have some new board members. The, we, we applied for and received a grant from the Department of Labor in the amount of $114,000 to install six welding booths in the Otter Valley shop. The idea is for that to support a number of things, explorers when we work with some of our younger kids, the core program being a, a course for ninth and 10th grade students to prepare them for welding at Stafford, and it sounds like Hanaford is potentially building a program. So it would be a half-credit course offered at Otter Valley, twice a year, serving up to 12 students at a time, which we can do if we have six welding booths. As Brenda said, we were, we were a little panicked when some votes came in, but as, as Brenda indicated, we've been, Devon Karpak has really been working with vendors to try to figure out exactly how to do this right while also staying within budget. So we think we're, yeah, we are, we're like, right, if everything goes perfectly, right, we would spend exactly what the grant has given us. My experience, which is certainly less than Brenda's, tells me that rarely do you see things come in at cost. That would be lovely, we just want to have that contingency from the board that if things do go over, that we could use 20,000 from the, from the facility reserve. So mostly just to recap of how we got here and what Brenda said. Brenda, I'm not sure, you know, one of the options we had discussed was that we could use local budget money, but either way, we felt like we wanted the board sort of a conceptual approval for continuing this, with this project, if there is some local cost to it, whether it's from the local budget or the facility fund.
We'd also like to, again, you know, when we started looking at this and coming, we were in a different place two weeks ago, and we would ideally like to place an order as soon as possible because some of this equipment could eventually be subject to tariffs, so the sooner we can place an order and hopefully avoid any of that, the better.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, is there a motion on the floor to have $20,000 of our reserve fund used, up to $20,000 of the reserve fund used for the welding project if there are cost overruns?
Enthusiastically moved, yeah.
That's right, okay. All right, so I heard Fernanda and Kevin.
Can we ask questions?
Yes, but I wanted the motion on the floor first. Okay, go for it.
I'm just curious, if we take that 20,000 out, is it taking something away from something else? Have you looked at what impacts it might have down the line?
I don't think so.
But I make sure, yeah.
Did you want me to answer that?
I, I was just indicating that I didn't think so. I mean, we have a lot of money in our reserve funds, 20,000 is a drop in the bucket, and so, no, I don't think so.
How much is in that reserve?
Um, there's over a million dollars. There's over $1 million.
Okay.
Do you know what kind of welding they're doing? Is it all welding, TIG, MIG, ARC, everything?
Going to be very introductory, as far as I understand.
Yeah, it's introductory, just to get the kids...
At the risk of indicating that I know nothing about welding, I may say something dumb. I think it's a combination of MIG and stick welding. Does that make sense to somebody who knows what they're talking about?
It does.
Where you would start, yeah.
Nice, Michael, nice.
You're getting an all-time.
Okay, other questions regarding this? And we may not even spend that money, that's the other thing. But we should let them, or place their orders, so that we can avoid any tariffs or any other unusual stuff.
Well, you can buy all those welders local, those welding shops around here have all those things local, anyway.
I would assume that these are specialized, so that he can see, you know, I'm assuming these are specialized.
I mean, the welding machines.
Yeah, as far as...
All manufactured in China.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, people stock them over, but who buy them to work?
He might have wanted a special kind, but yeah, you're right. Okay. So, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to use up to $20,000 of our reserve funds if the welding program needs it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Perfect, thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Everett.
Yeah. Hawk Hill Committee, Fernanda, are you still on with us?
I am.
Okay, do you want to take this over, or?
Well, I just want to say that I'm happy to serve on the committee, but I also am admitting to a lack of time to be able to really work with it more, and if there's somebody who's very moved to take it on, I would be happy to give the reins.
Okay.
I'm also happy to continue, and I feel like I'm developing a relationship, but it's just that it has potential for so much more than I'm able to do with it, so.
Well, your predecessor did have a lot of extra time. He did devote a lot of time, because he was retired at the time, to the, and he brought it back up to where it is currently, so.
Yeah.
Is there anybody, is there interest on the board? We do have to have a board member on the board.
I would say please continue.
Okay, well, I do feel like I keep looking for the opportunities to find the time. I do enjoy it, so I will continue, just keep your expectations what they are for now.
Even if you met quarterly, that would be, you know, fine.
We are, we are meeting. We've met twice, you know, this year, so that's great, and we have plans to meet again. And there are things that are happening, and it is a program that is worth appreciating and worth living, so I do want to do more with it, and we have ideas, but it's just, everything is moving very slowly on my side, because of my lack of time. So just wanted you to know that.
And are you still looking for a Brandon museum rep?
We have not found one. There was a question, and I wonder, Kevin, if that's something you might be able to help me with, but we were looking to ask, I have not heard that it has been accepted, so.
I spoke to John Peterson about it at the Brandon Town meeting. He was uninterested, he's trying to get off boards at this point in his life, but he made another suggestion of a person that I have not yet spoken to, and I'm hoping that she will accept.
All right, and let me know if you think that, you know, you want me to talk to that person.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Fernanda about Hawk Hill? Okay. Other business for future consideration, is there anything weighing on people's minds?
There's some other business, it's not for future consideration, though.
Okay, well, we may not be able to act on it tonight.
It's not in action.
Okay.
We had the one acts this weekend, one of which spoke about a fuddy-duddy school board member who doesn't understand theater, which I loved. I spoke to the author about where she got the idea, and she didn't tell me the answer, but she did laugh at me. The other, the main event was the one act for the state competition, and it's a play called Queens. It's about the wives of Henry VIII from the perspective of the women, fantastic production. And our colleague Brendan played Henry VIII in hell, so...
Just purgatory, so forth.
I wish he'd worn his costume to the school board meeting tonight. He might have been elected chair at the beginning, but it was a very entertaining show. I wish the theater group luck and to break a leg when they do the competition for the state.
Yeah, they have to do regionals first, March 21st. So, and then states after, if they make it. Okay, anything else? All right, Superintendent, informational report.
The only thing, since I already mentioned the, you know, making sure that we follow the democratic process, is just keep an eye out on the governor's plan. There's a lot of information that's coming out, both from the governor and from the legislature. There, I don't know necessarily which way it's going to go. I think there's going to be a call for a change in the number of governance divisions, so fewer school districts, maybe a few supervisory unions, but that's probably the case. I think there is some conversation out there about the foundation funding, moving to, moving that, moving from the system that we have now that is extremely difficult to simplify into presentations, but the foundation formula, which is used in nearly 40 other states, would make it a lot easier. One of the issues that I think people are complaining about is that they're only identifying the base funding that comes with the foundation formula. Right now, that base funding is approximately what we're paying for average student in Otter Valley, and that's before any of the waits that come from free and reduced lunch and other waits. So there's a good chance that we would benefit from it. The one conversation that I am not hearing a lot about is really emphasizing the educational quality for our students, and since that was the one part of the, the major part of the proposal, they're being very silent. So if you look at the, I don't know, I think it's 170-page document that the bill came out on.
176?
176. Much of it is, you know, scratching out, because it's being repealed, but very few of those pages are dedicated to educational quality, so.
Sorry, if you have a chance to listen to the one-hour coffee talk that Peter Conlin did with Jill Konowski, or whatever her name is, from Ways and Means, very informative, and it is online, on the Ways and Means and the education YouTube site, to be able to watch that. So. Okay, so, next meeting for us is April Fool's Day, ha, ha, ha. 6 o'clock here. Next week, the facilities committee will be meeting here Tuesday at 6:00. And before we all get to leave, we are going to have a short executive session for personnel issues. You do not need to stay for that. Sure.